Mr. Brown, would you like to join us? Wow, what a beautiful picture.
I know, the logo looks really good.
It's unbelievable. Really does look good. Welcome, everyone. Madam Clerk, could you read, call the meeting?
Absolutely.
Roll, please.
Good afternoon. Mr. Bailey? Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Herbert?
Here.
Dr. Bustles?
Here.
Mr. Brennan?
Present.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Here.
Thank you.
Everybody, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend McDowell, would you mind doing the invocation, please?
Let us pray. Gracious and eternal Creator, for all that You've done for us today, for life, health, strength, for the premise of Your presence in our lives, we simply say thank You. We come today to celebrate our city. We celebrate all of the things that are happening within our city. And we pray continually that this city continues to expand and prosper. We know that there are concerns and issues, but in a very systematic and spiritual way, we try to maintain an answer and to quicken those decisions. We ask it, we claim it in Your name. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Mayor, Council. At this time, we would ask for the adoption of the agenda with one amendment to the agenda as follows, and that is deferring consideration of items 41 through 44, appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals, the Commercial Revolving Loan Fund Committee, Municipal Election Commission, and Parks and Recreation Foundation.
Just a question before we take a motion on this. Is it not possible to get an appointment for the zoning board appeals? They have been struggling to get a quorum. We really need to get that appointment done.
If that's your preference, Mr. Mayor, I think...
Do we have any recommendation? I mean, are y'all, are you okay with that, with the Boza?
What's the number of appointees? Madam Clerk?
We don't have the information here.
I believe when Ashley checked with the staff, they said they were okay with waiting, but if you...
Yeah, I had heard too. But we don't have the material, so I don't want to make a decision without all the material, so why don't we just... We've got to deal with this by the August 5th meeting.
I spoke with staff, and we let them know what was going on, and they said it'd be fine until the next meeting. So we have added it to the next meeting. They made the quorum.
Just want to make sure, because one of the board members has reached out to make sure we're getting it done, because it's been backed up since April.
Yes, sir. I talked to the zoning administrator, let her know. She let me know. They made quorum at the last meeting, but they were waiting for someone to come. She said as long as it's by the August meeting, then they'll be fine. Yes, sir.
All right, so just, we're going to adopt the agenda with the deferment of consideration of item 41 and 44. I got a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Further comment, though, that we will have that completed for the August 5th meeting, so let's make that a priority, please. With that, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Aye.
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 Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, we'll make sure that takes place. At this time, there is opportunity for public input, and these would be four items on the agenda that do not require a zoning public hearing or any other type of public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Madam Clerk? Could you read the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye. And before we move on to presentations, I'd like to take a point of personal privilege. Where's Teresa Knox, our city attorney? Is she hiding somewhere?
She's over there.
Ms. Knox, could you come forward, please? Yes. We'd like you to recite the bylaws of the city for us.
Well, you want me to start with it?
Page 27. No, actually, we're here to celebrate your 10-year anniversary with the city. And we wanted to present you with your pen, give you your certificate of achievement, but also thank you for constantly helping us keep out of the ditches, keeping us in the middle of the road, but also being an intricate part of a great team. We're very fortunate. And, you know, it makes it even more exciting when I look out here and I see all these city employees here, especially sporting the new logo, how far we've come and how much we've been able to do. And it's because everybody's working together. And I just think it's an incredible day to celebrate. And they're all here for you, because you just made it all happen. But we wanted to present you with your service pen.
Yay, Teresa.
Ms. Wilson has a big check for you.
Don't hold your breath, girl.
Keep your speech to 20 minutes, please.
You can blame me for the surprise. All right, moving into presentations. And again, our wonderful Parks and Recreation team with us today, Parks and Recreation Month Proclamation, the Honorable Daniel J. Rickaman, Mayor.
All right, Parks folks, come up front. Let's see you. Come on, Randy, lead the charge.
I'd like to say a few words. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor Rickaman.
Come on, get the crew up here. Let's get them up here. Come on. I want everybody to see you.
He started talking before everybody moved up there.
Face this way. Go. Face this way. Yeah.
Hey, Larry. Larry.
All right, Randy.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Mayor Rickaman, members of City Council, and the residents of this great city. I'm very pleased to stand before you this day to celebrate Parks and Recreation Month. This month is special to us as we recognize and appreciate incredible values that parks, recreation facilities, and programs bring to our community. First and foremost, I want to thank the people that you see in front of me and donned in their white shirts that make what we do every day look easy. Their dedication, their teamwork, their passion, their drive force behind the department's success stands before you. From maintaining beautiful parks to creating engaging programs, our team goes above and beyond every day to ensure that our communities have access to top-notch recreational and leisure opportunities. I also want to thank our city manager and mayor and members of council for your continued support for our department. Together, we will continue to build a vibrant, healthy, and connected community through Parks and Recreation. Thank you so much.
While y'all are snapping a picture, I'm not going to read the whole Parks and Recs proclamation just because I think we all know that Parks and Recreation, the shared outdoor spaces, the programs, the health, the wellness, the physical and mental health of people you work with every day is so important to all of you. And we reflect it as we see in our parks. Every day, as you walk into a park office, you see nothing but smiles. You can be on the riverfront and run into a park ranger, you see nothing but smiles. You can go down to Earlwood, you can go see our design team that's constantly coming up with new innovative ways to provide us with beautiful parks in our city. But we don't stop there. As Randy so eloquently said, thanks to our city staff, our leaders, our ACM over Parks, Henry, and our team at the city manager's office, along with all the staff working together to make sure that we're constantly funding and improving the quality of life in our community. And the center of that in a lot of our communities is our parks. We will continue to invest in those through cultural arts, through summer camps, through athletic programs, outdoor adventures, youth programs, and our senior programs, continuing to invest to improve the quality. We keep saying we want to be the number-one city in South Carolina, but we want to be the number-one city about quality of life, not about population. And so with that, we'd like to present, from the entire City Council, our city manager and all our senior staff, to present y'all with the Parks and Recreation Month Proclamation that I'm going to hand y'all, so y'all can take a picture with it.
Mr. Mayor, I know as the Park staff is either going back to do other important things or staying with us, I think Mr. Brown had mentioned on today's agenda there's some really relevant...
Uh-oh, hit the butt.
Just preparing for the show.
Mr. Brown mentioned ironically on our agenda today there's some wonderful Parks projects. And I know at the appropriate time, you all will take those items up, but I didn't know if you wanted to share anything that you were thinking, Mr. Brown?
Well, first of all, I think the mayor is 100% right. Columbia, this is about quality of life, and it's about all of our citizens. We've got two great projects in my district, Hampton Park Splash Pad, and then the revitalization of Maze Park. My parents moved above Maze Park when I was four years old. I'm 58, and used to walk down to Maze Park as a kid. And it looks a lot like it did when I was a kid. And now it's going to look like it's a modern park in a modern city with modern amenities. And I think it's really a testament to this city, this council, this staff, that we're so focused on these types of projects. I just want to congratulate everybody on how we're moving the needle and how we're focused on quality-of-life projects in this city. I think it's amazing, and it goes a long way with developing the vibe of this city, but also the messaging to the rest of South Carolina, the rest of the region, and the rest of the United States of America, that Columbia is an up-and-coming place, focused on the right things, and really looking to do special things going forward. So I just wanted to make sure that we celebrate some of these things that we're working on and the people behind them. And I'm so excited about Maze Park, I can't tell you. I might just go there every week just to check on things. Get ready for me, Henry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, and thank you, Council. Our next presentation is the American Heart Association check presentation. And I will ask our wonderful staff, led by Ms. Galena Alford, to come forward for remarks, but so appreciative of our city team, who have always put causes in the front of what we do, because so many of these causes, whether it's the breast cancer awareness, American Heart Association will have another one next time regarding sickle cell disease. They put it first, because so many of our own employees, including myself, are impacted by these issues. And that's how we combat it and overcome it as a team and as a family, and making everyone aware of the triggers, the different things you can do to be preventative. So, Galena?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council and our city manager. With the guidance of our city manager, the ambassador of the City of Columbia, we are proud to join along aside the American Heart Association. The City of Columbia is committed to take leadership role in saving lives and making our city a healthier place. This is something very near and dear to our city manager's heart. And so during this campaign, we did a walk for the first time down Main Street to State House. And we did T-shirt sales, donations from different departments. And also, we did the meter campaign from the parking team. So this is the meters that you see. And so I'm going to ask George from Parking to come up and speak about the meters. And if we have any vendors here that did these beautiful meters for us, I'm going to ask them to come up. Okay? Yes?
Microphone.
He's like, his voice carries, but still, we want you on the mic.
Good afternoon. Thank y'all for having us here today, Mayor, Council, manager, and guests. Thank y'all very much. This is exciting for Parking Services. This is the second year we've been aligned with the American Heart Association for something that has turned into something really fun, exciting, and unique. We had a very successful last year with non-sponsors. This year, we got a little ambitious and up to 15 sponsors and had no trouble finding some amazing organizations and businesses that jumped at the chance. Several of them called me before. I had a chance to get to them. And several of them have united for a second year in a row. This is a really fun and unique way to give back to the city and to support the city and the American Heart Association. They really did step up. It's, as I told them, it's hard to put what their effort is into dollars and cents, because what they have started to build will be grown upon in the future. And next year, even better than before. As I call your name, we'd love for you to come up and take your thank you, because it's with a very grateful heart. The city and the Heart Association appreciates you. I'm going to read them, because I don't want to miss anybody. And these were two-time members. Travis with Pull Apart and his partner in Atlanta, June Griffin. They, again, a national company that Travis called me two years ago out of the blue and said... I'll just stand right here. Travis called me out of the blue and wanted to be a part of it and got the folks from Atlanta involved. Hospitality America with Justin Daye. I don't think Justin's here today. But another national company who, for the second year, took part in our organization, given us great credibility and stability. Scott Garvin and Meg Sims from Garvin Design, again, for the second year. Columbia Marriott with Becky Watts and Stephen Usri. Stephen's here. Five Points Association. Heather couldn't make it, but we have Meredith in the back who taken a bow for the Five Points Association. We also have Abby Anderson with the Vista Guild. So having two of the three districts sponsor a meter was not only exciting, but it really helped generate a buzz in their districts. Tandy Hill Group Therapy and CBE 18, which is Breakers Live. They got two. They tried to catch up for last year, so they got two meters this year. Ms. Cocky, which is on Main Street, and also in Lexington, Meredith Marlowe. Polk Cole Powered Films on Lincoln Street with Chip Wade. Chivas Spa on Main Street. If you haven't been there, you need to go check them out. Christina, Chivas Spa. Aloft Cola downtown, another great sponsor. Concrete Vista Guild, Abby. Coker Center for the Arts with Chip Wade. Cool Care Heating Air Plumbing and Refrigeration. If you didn't know, they've added plumbing and refrigeration, so give them a call. And we appreciate Teresa Ward Law and All Good Books with Julie down in Five Points. So thank y'all very much, and we sure appreciate all y'all've done.
Thank you very much. And with that said, we would like to quickly bring up Ms. Miranda from the American Heart Association, and then we'll present the check.
Thank you so much, and thank you for having me. Thank you for everything that you all have done. My name is Miranda Williams, and I'm the Marketing and Communications Director for the American Heart Association. Lizzie, who was supposed to be here, has got COVID, so we're sending in definitely some prayers to her. But I gladly told her that I would come. I don't have anything prepared, so I'm sorry about that. But I just wanted to say thank you. I've been in Columbia for 24 years. I moved here to go to the university. I'm a single mom, and in November of 2022, I had a cardiac event at the age of 40. So I was somebody that I never thought would have to experience something like that, but that was a very terrifying experience. But being here today and seeing all of you that really, you know, support what we do is super, super encouraging. So I just want to say thank you for that. This has been a great year we've had. This is our centennial year for the American Heart Association. So we again appreciate you all supporting us, and we're excited about the impact that we've made. But we also know that one in three women will still die of heart disease. We still know that a lot of our neighbors don't eat healthy food on a regular basis. A lot of our children aren't exercising. So we've got a lot more work to do, and we're going to need people to continue the race with us. And so we look forward to continually partnering with you all, and just thank you so much for everything. So, thank you.
And with that said, we would like to present a check to the American Heart Association from the City of Columbia for $12,000.
Heart disease is a number-one killer of all Americans, both men and women. In fact, heart disease kills more women than all forms of cancer combined. Go Red Campaign and Heart Month is really about getting people excited, shedding a positive light on knowing your numbers and empowering yourself to really, really take charge of your own health.
We're going to start the auction for the... Get your paddles out now.
Great idea, Mayor. Hopefully, maybe we can do that for the businesses themselves.
Yeah, we're going to get our senator to bid on the group therapy one.
Okay. Thank you all for all the support, two great presentations. That takes us to our consent agenda, items four through 19.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for items four through 19 for consideration. Any further comments, questions, concerns? I know that it was highlighted earlier about some of the park investments. Is there anything else anybody has to add? If not, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll, please?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number 20, under consideration of bids, contracts, and change orders, is, Council is asked to approve change order number four for Project WM4545 Filter Rehabilitation of the Canal and Lake Murray Water Treatment Plant as requested by Columbia Water on June 10, 2024.
So we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions?
Clint, why do you always come to us asking for more money, substantial money?
It's $2 million every time, by the way.
Yes, and I would like to know if this is absolutely necessary and that we will be on track to complete this project with no more increases.
So very much, great question and a very large change order. The rationale behind this request is we had additional filter bottoms fail at the canal water plant. We had this programmed as a future project. Because those filter under drains failed, and we lost that capacity based on the time necessary to get the materials for filter media and under drains, and the work that MBCon was already doing mobilized similar work already.
Actually, a cost savings.
Well, they gave us a good price, and also it allowed us to be able to get these filters in service before next summer's demand hits.
And did the filter fail because of us, them?
The age.
Time, age?
Age, Dr. Bustles. We've been going through the capacity evaluation, and so you'll see future filter rehab... We're trying to program it in. These failed slightly prematurely, but they're really at the end of their useful life. So it's necessary work that we were going to spend those dollars anyway. We just decided to have MBCon do the work, since they were already at the site.
Any other questions from Council? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
And Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Item 21, Council was asked to approve a new construction contract for Project SS7615, the Broad River Pump Station Miscellaneous Improvements as requested by Columbia Water on April 17, 2024, awarded to MBCon Waterworks LLC in an amount not to exceed $10,805,932.50, which includes the base bid, bid alternate number one, bid alternate number two, and contingency. The initial term of the contract will take effect upon issuance of the notice to proceed, with an end date 780 days from commencement. This contractor is located in Columbia, South Carolina. The following subcontractors and suppliers.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions?
I don't specifically have a question, but I think if we're spending $10 million, I'd like to at least have some narrative.
It's in your packet agenda.
I'll be happy to provide a little context to that, that's helpful. So Broad River Pump Station is one of our large waste... The, so Broad River Pump Station is one of our large wastewater collection, one of our five largest wastewater collection pump stations, and we convey quite a large collection area. This is almost a complete rebuild without structural modifications. We're changing the type of pumps, we're changing the capacity, we're redoing the electrical components, we're renewing that station and its shell and adding a larger generator and more capacity. You'll also see in the coming months a Broad River Force Main Improvement Project that'll dovetail in with this, and that'll increase the capacity in that catchment area and relieve any restrictions that we had on development moving forward. So again, a large project, and really pleased to move this one forward.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing done, seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
And Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
Moving into a period of resolutions, item 22, resolution number R 2024-051, annexing .054 acres to the southern western area of Piney Woods Road and .057 acres, the southern western portion of Piney Woods Road, also known as 4034 Fernandino Road in Richland County.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, hearing none, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
And Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
Item 23, resolution number R 2024-052, authorizing acceptance and dedication of streets known as Hay Meadow Lane, Beaconville Road, Holstein Lane, Silage Court, Trading Path Lane, and Council Loop located in the Village at Burns that Farm.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
Item 24, resolution number R 2024-057, authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding between the United States Department of Interior, National Park Service, Congaree National Park, and the Columbia Fire Department.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion, questions? Seeing none, hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
Item 25, resolution number R 2024-058, authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding between the City of Columbia and Monco Homes Properties LLC for a new sanitary sewer main extension in the Swigert Creek Drainage Basin within the city sewer service area.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing done, seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
Item 26, resolution number R 2024-059, amending resolution number R 2017-052, and adopting a revised City of Columbia honorary street naming policy, facility, room, and site naming policy, and honorary naming application.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Reverend McDowell or Dr. Bustles, either one of y'all want to just give a highlight of what the changes were for those who didn't have an opportunity to attend the committee meeting?
You want to?
Yeah.
So this was, I think, a very thoughtful process in terms of being consistent and fair and being able to triage and manage the different requests that come in for naming different buildings or streets. And we learned that we just needed to create some better systems and process in terms of capturing some of those over the years, as well as moving forward, finding a way that, you know, all council members are up to speed on potential renaming's. So kind of the highlights is that there will be an application that the applicant or the sponsoring city council member will now need to submit. That will then kind of open up this process of everybody on council knowing that this is something in the works, and will hopefully also ensure we're aligning when sometimes we get these ad hoc requests to name certain things. We also updated the naming policy to include rooms, like conference rooms and other specific rooms that was not explicitly included in the policy. And then we also updated where the plaque or the marker will be included, depending on the type of facility that it is. And then I think we spent the most time just trying to make the actual application easy to understand, including exactly what we need for the designation, exactly the types of letters that we need, and then, you know, making sure that we are getting back to them with a yes or no in a timely manner. Again, trying to be as fair as possible and consistent as possible as these requests come in.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Item 27 through 28, 29 represents the approval process for the applications that are so listed. Item 26, can I do this singularly, or can we do it just in blanket?
I think we have to approve the policy first.
We can do it all together.
Can we do it all together?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Just mention each item by item.
Yeah, if we could, item number 27 is the honorary naming...
I think we just need to approve item 6 first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
If we could do that...
And then you do the others together.
Yes. We can approve 26, but 26, 7, 28, and 29...
You can do together.
Yes, sir.
So let's go ahead and do 26, which we've already got a motion and a second.
I have a motion.
So if Madam Clerk would read the roll, and then you can make your motion.
Yes.
All right. Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right.
27 through 29 are the naming, are the naming of various facilities and special naming on facility places. If we could do all three of these at one time?
Yes, sir.
We can do that?
Yes, sir.
Would you like me to read them into the record?
I'll so move that, Mr. Mayor.
Do you want to read them out?
Want me to read them into the record for you?
If you would.
Yes, sir, of course. The approval of honorary facility and site naming resolutions, the first being resolution number R 2024-053, approving the honorary naming of the Community Resource Center located at 2611 Grant Street, the Sarah Nance Community Resource Center. And the next resolution, R 202024-054, approving the honorary naming of the community center located at 1113 Recreation Drive, the Virginia Bedford Community Center. And finally, resolution number R 2024-056, approving the honorary naming of the community garden at TS Martin Neighborhood Park, the Joseph F.S. Azar Community Garden.
Move, Mr. Mayor. Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
A motion and double seconds. With that, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickman?
Absolutely.
Wonderful. And Mayor...
Go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to recognize Mr. Fred Monk, who was here. I'm gonna let the mayor do it.
No, go ahead, please, have Fred come up.
Okay. Oh, Fred, the mayor would like for you to come up. But this is Ms. Virginia Bedford's husband. We worked well quite a few years ago, and I will turn it over to you, Mayor.
Fred, we'd love for you to say a word, but just know from the city, this is an exciting opportunity for us to thank Virginia for her tireless efforts. And sometimes Virginia didn't agree with us all the time, and sometimes we didn't agree with Virginia. But at the end of the day, it was always about the community and what she did, everything from community meetings to cultivating Earlwood Park, to pouring her heart into Three Rivers Music Festival. I mean, and I could sit here for the next 30 minutes and keep naming. I think this is appropriate.
Yes. Well, thank you very much, on behalf of Virginia and our family. And Peter, your words about the quality of life, and that's what Virginia was all about. You know, when she first located in Earlwood in the mid-'70s, when there was nobody around, to building that neighborhood, and then, you know, her passion for the entire city. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you for being here, Fred. It's exciting. I don't believe there's anybody here for any of the other families or representative for the Azar Estate. I don't, I didn't see them, but if you are, you're welcome to come up and speak.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. We have an event resolution, item 30, resolution number R 2024-041, authorizing consumption of beer, wine, and liquor at 8:03 day in the 1600 block of Blanding Street between Pickens Street and Henderson Street on Saturday, August 3, 2024.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing done, seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving into our public hearing and first reading for zoning planning matters, as Ms. Hampton comes forward, item 31 is an annexation, future land use map amendment and zoning map amendment for .054 acres, as we mentioned earlier, off Piney Woods Road, also known as 4034 Fernandino Road. And this is the corresponding zoning matter.
Such a big parcel.
Yes, yes. Andrew's getting them off one at a time, though he's coming around. So thank you very much, yes, and it is a request to annex the property, assign a land use classification of regional activity corridor, and a zoning of general commercial.
Is there anybody here to speak for or against this annexation, zoning map amendment?
No one has signed up to speak.
No one has signed up, so I'll entertain a motion from the district representative?
So move.
Got a motion, how about a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
Item 32 is an annexation, future land use map amendment and zoning map amendment for 3029 Faro Road and a portion next to Kent Street. Request to annex the property, assign a land use classification of urban core residential small lot, and a zoning of community activity center corridor.
Is there anybody here to speak for or against this item?
Mayor, no one has signed up to speak.
Just for the public's, can you just explain, because several people have asked previously and others, and just as a reminder, what community activity center corridor actually means?
Sure, so it's not a community center. It is, we have differing zoning classifications based on whether it's a neighborhood, center, a community, or a regional. So it's about the scale, and so community is that mid-scale zoning classification. So it's not that we're zoning it for a community center, it's that it's that scale of zoning.
Thank you, I just want to make sure the public, somebody had called in, and that was their only question for that.
And that is what is on the remaining part of that Faro Road. And just quickly, Mr. Davis would be very pleased that these are coming in. We had a concerted effort a number of years ago to annex along Faro Road. Those that were vacant, we were unable to annex, and so I know both Andrew and I are very pleased that these are coming in, and the new owners, we're excited to have in the city.
Reverend McDowell, this is your district. Would you like to make the motion, since we have no one here?
So move.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next, item number 33 is for five acres bounded by Senate Street, Millwood Avenue, Height Street, and Short Street. It's a request to rezone the property from residential, single-family, small lot, residential mixed, and community activity corridor portions of these are in the old Shandor Raverly Historic Preservation Overlay, and the request is to rezone all of this to mixed-use district with the portion remaining in the historic overlay.
Is there anybody here to speak for or against this item?
No one has signed up to speak.
Okay. As we move forward to take a motion, I would like to request that the applicant and the future folks who are going to be working on that meet with council members that represent that district along with the neighborhood to just discuss the overall plan, to make sure that we're working together before the second reading. So my motion would be to move forward on first reading, adding that we would request a meeting between the applicant, neighborhood, and council representatives to discuss the overall project, to make sure that we're working together to bring the best project forward, to enhance and improve the quality of life in that neighborhood. Got a motion, is there a second?
Second. Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye, my apologies.
It's okay. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell? Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
Your final matter is number 34, which is a zoning map amendment for 650 South Edisto Avenue. Request to rezone the property from employment campus in the airport safety overlay to residential mixed use in the airport safety overlay.
Is there anybody signed up for or against this item?
No, sir.
Does anybody want to speak for or against this item?
So move.
I got a motion from the district representative, the second Reverend McDowell. Any other further discussion or questions? Seeing none, hearing none, Madam Clerk, let's keep it going.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
That concludes your zoning public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Hampton.
Ordinances first reading, item 35, ordinance number 2024-049, amending the 1998 Code of Ordinances of the City of Columbia, South Carolina, Chapter 24, Vehicles for Hire, Article 2, Taxi Cabs, Shuttles, and Limousines, Division 3, the Certificate of Public Safety...
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing done, seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor recommend?
Aye.
Item thirty five and thirty six are both endorsements from the Economic Development and Infrastructure Committee, I should say, and item thirty six is ordinance number two thousand twenty four zero five zero amending the nineteen ninety eight Code of Ordinances of the City of Columbia, South Carolina, chapter eleven, licenses, permits, and miscellaneous business regulations.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing done, seeing none, this all did come out of the Economic Development Committee with endorsement. With that, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor recommend?
Aye.
Item thirty seven, ordinance number two thousand twenty four zero five one granting an encroachment to Nancy White for the use of the right-of-way area of the nineteen hundred block of Pendleton Street for the installation and maintenance of an expanded brick parking pad adjacent to nineteen thirty two. Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing done, seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor recommend?
Aye.
Item thirty eight, ordinance number two thousand twenty four zero five two amending ordinance two thousand twenty three one zero two granting an encroachment to the Five Points Association for use of the right-of-way areas of the seven hundred block of Harden Street and the seven hundred block of Saluda Avenue for the installation and maintenance of one tree and a suspended pavement system.
Sub move.
It's got a motion and a second, any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor recommend?
Aye.
Item thirty nine, ordinance number two thousand twenty four zero five eight, approval for conveyance of Cotton Town Way, formerly Galeyard Street in Richland County.
Got a, is there a motion?
Sub move.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor recommend?
Aye.
Item forty, ordinance number two thousand twenty four zero six zero granting an encroachment to Real Estate LLC for the use of the right-of-way area of the one thousand block of Queen Street for the installation and maintenance of a porch, steps, walkway, and parking pad.
Sub move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor recommend?
Aye.
Deferring appointments, items forty one through forty four, and moving to other matters, item forty five, council is asked to approve an allocation in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars to the Midlands Authority for Convention, Sports, and Tourism for marketing of the Rivals in Red International Soccer Tournament.
There a motion?
Sub move.
Got a motion and a second, before we do the final reading, we'd love, Scott, you're here, if you just maybe could let everybody know the things that are happening for this big event that we're excited about to our community.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we truly appreciate this funding. When we were first presented with this opportunity, we said, we will take this event and do much like we did with March Madness in two thousand nineteen, and try to make it an event over several days, but how do you take a two-and-a-half-hour soccer match and turn it into a multi-day event? So we are using this funding to market stay in Columbia Thursday, Friday, and Saturday for soccer. We're partnering with First Thursday, that's the unofficial kickoff for the weekend, will be first Thursday on Main Street. We have encouraged folks throughout the community and Main Street, Five Points Association, Vista Guild, everybody's coming together to put on additional events that we can therefore market outside the state of South Carolina, outside of Columbia, to get people to come earlier. We had, the only thing that sold as quickly as tickets did was hotel rooms on Saturday night. So how do we get them to come Friday night or Thursday night? So that's why we were requesting this funding to help extend stays for people for this event.
And we're gonna be sharing the calendar, I know that Sota City is setting up some things, and that there seems to be lots of live music options and celebrations all over, part of that is gonna be getting all that information out to folks and driving Friday night and Saturday night hotel rooms.
Yes, sir, yeah. Thursday night, we're painting, I think everybody remembers the large basketball that we did in two thousand nineteen, the local artists did, and we're doing twenty soccer balls that will be placed along Main Street for First Thursday, and there will be a scavenger hunt to find those items at businesses throughout Main Street. Friday, the Vista Guild is putting on a huge event, we're very excited about that. Fan Fest will be going on, Gamecock Park, two thirty, and for those of you who want to come out and see the gentlemen of all skills, we've got a tentative agreement from the mayor to play goalie at Sota City Market on Saturday morning. So anybody, Mr. Brennan, no, no, I think you should volunteer as well, but we appreciate if your schedule allows, Mr. Mayor, I think it's gonna be fun, we're gonna have some people out to take some kicks at different celebrities from around our community. Mr. Brown looks like he's excited.
I know I'm in.
Is he here for kicking the ball or playing goalie?
For kicking the ball. And for those who want more excitement, there'll be a dunk booth coming up as well, so everybody can pitch in for charity.
Also in.
Thank you, Scott.
Yes, sir, thank y'all.
With that, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor recommend?
Aye.
Not sure, Mr. Mayor, if there are any committee referrals, reports, and new business.
Does anybody have any referrals?
Mayor, I do have one thing.
Yes, ma'am.
And in looking at some of the contracts that we were discussing earlier, and the large sums associated with them, it reminded me of the need to finish the disparities discussion, disparity study discussion, and I was actually gonna refer that to the city manager for the proper committee, or whether or not we would want to ad hoc. I do think, Mr. Brown, it may fall under economic development, but I'm just throwing that out there, or wherever Clint may be, and OBO may be.
What about the minority business council?
They can be a part, oh yeah, they should definitely be a part of it. But I do want to make sure we get that discussion before the study is stale and we can't use the data, and I'll defer to wherever y'all want to put it.
Okay.
Take that for consideration here, wait for the city manager to give us a recommendation.
I know that there were some very specific things, because we have presented the recommendations, and I think there were some, just a few items to Councilwoman Herbert's point that we were going to tweak or address, so let me think about that, ma'am, but we'll get that, we'll get that done.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any other referrals? I have just one, I'd like to refer to the Health, Social, Environmental Affairs Committee to discuss amending the ordinance to be more inclusive of planted wildlife gardens and plantings in the City of Columbia. This has reference to Article seven, section three oh one regarding weeds and debris. Currently, our unified development ordinance allows exceptions for wildlife gardens while nuisance ordinance does not, so we conflict each other. So I'd like to see these two ordinances line up and ensure prioritization, wildlife gardens aren't punished for having a positive impact that they're making in our community. So if Dr. Bustles would accept that referral?
Yes.
I appreciate that, and then I also.
I know you're gonna share that with us, Mr. Mayor.
Huh?
I said that was very well put together, the clerk and I would love to have a copy.
I will pass this on to you.
Thank you.
And also, while I have everybody's attention, we invested in some little libraries to spread around our community, they're hand-painted by kids in our parks, and we're doing a book drive to fill those, and that book drive started already and goes through the end of the month, so if you've got children's books or you've got novels, you need to clear out some shelves with some good reading, we'd like to share those across the community. We have twenty-four boxes to fill that are going around into our communities and creating just a little bit of fun in some of our neighborhoods, but very excited that our kids from our camps were able to participate and decorate these old boxes. Anybody else have anything else? With that, Madam Clerk, we're at that famous time at city, public input.
At the time, Mayor, we have Mrs. Diane Wiley signed up to speak, we will remind Mrs. Wiley that we have a three-minute time limit.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Ms. Wiley.
First, I want to thank everybody for, did y'all see the news today? We was elected, we was elected the most valuable state in the country on January twenty five, and they said we was growing, we, housing was cheaper, cost of living, we need to look at news, but I came up here. But anyway, my thing is the zoning, you know, which I just talked to y'all about, they're trying to put some trucking companies, you know, they put on Bronx Street, Bronx Street, come off of Beltline.
Come up the drive.
Yeah, oh, okay. I don't know, I gave you so much, I don't, I'll make sure.
Long was about a barber shop? Did you hear that one?
It wasn't even as hard as getting that.
Oh, that's, no, that was the barber shop.
That's the barber shop.
Barber shop. No, this is on Bronx Street. Where Beltline and Two-Not Road, you turn on Beltline and that first little street with a little car dealership, that's Bronx, and the air-conditioned place right there. That property, it's about three lots there, and he trying to put tractor trailer, parked tractor trailers there. I don't know whether that's city, county, but the little sign looked like county, but I thought that was city, you know.
We'll look into it, Ms. Wiley.
Uh-huh, and another thing, too, I heard that y'all getting ready to get a new hotel down in Five Points?
We hope.
Yeah, okay, now.
We hope to get one on Harden Street, too.
And we need one on Two-Not Road, because we got two colleges there.
Well, actually, they're colleges on Harden Street.
Well, you know, still, we got two colleges there.
That's what we were talking about.